...year at ceremony in March, but we wanted to do our part to recognize her at the Board of Education meeting. So each year, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution awards multiple scholarships to students showing dedication to the pursuit of higher education. Awards are based on academic excellence, commitment to the field of study, and this particular award is based on this student's display of honor, service, courage, leadership, and patriotism. This year's recipient is Kira Katie. I have some more great things to say about Kira. Kira is one of the top students at Lyman. Kira comes from a military family and spent time in Germany, which has sparked a lifelong love of her country. In high school, Kira has challenged herself with many advanced placement and honors level courses in preparation for her post-secondary goals at the University of New Haven, where she plans to study national security and homeland security. Kira has been a part of the Model UN, Student Council, and Amnesty International. Some of her recent classes allude to her love of social studies, human rights, foreign policy, and Russian history. So it's our pleasure to give just a little token of our appreciation for her hard work to Kira Katie this evening.
If you didn't mind letting Mrs. Mayner sit up, so I'll take a quick picture of you off the screen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
We have our next recognition. We would just like to thank, as we were speaking about before the meeting, we are so grateful for all of your contributions, Ms. Avery, to our Board of Education. We truly appreciate your spirit, your enthusiasm for Lebanon, you know, your participation within the Board, and we have just a little token of appreciation for you.
You have to open.
I have to open? Okay, I was gonna ask. All right. Feel like it's my birthday.
Is it your birthday?
Did you do this?
I didn't.
Yes, you did. It's written all over you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Of course. No, thank you, guys.
All right, keeping the celebrations going, we had some bittersweet communications come to us towards the end of the year, and tonight, we're gonna take a little bit more time to more formally congratulate some very valuable members of our district team who will be retiring this year. So I'm gonna do a write-up, read the write-up for each of you, and then we have some gifts that we'd like to present you tonight. I'll start with Rumah Gupta. She has taught in the 5th Grade Resource Room at Lebanon Middle School for the past 25 years and altogether has over 32 years of teaching experience. I have some quotes from her colleagues and former administrators that she has consistently received exemplary reviews. "You're a true professional. The students in the 5th Grade Resource Room are fortunate to have a teacher who recognizes the potential in each of them and supports them in their journey to fulfilling their goals," one of her administrators said. "Rumah's steady presence in 5th Grade over the years has created strong consistency in our approach to welcoming the special education students moving up from the elementary school into the middle school environment. As a brand-new educator working with Rumah 25 years ago," you might be able to guess who this administrator is, "I leaned on her for support with students who presented me with a unique challenge. Now, 25 years later, as an administrator, I have found myself once again going to her for her expertise on how to best differentiate my approach to each student's unique needs. She will be greatly missed." Congratulations. And I know you're not one for words in front of an audience, but if you'd like, you're more than welcome to say anything that's on your mind.
Just want to say thank you and your real love and support and that I've had from the students as well as staff and members of the community.
Thank you. Next is Greta Skiles. Greta was hired as a reading consultant at Lebanon Elementary School in 2016. I remember that moment, and has since transitioned to a kindergarten classroom teacher. When the opportunity presented itself, Greta decided to return to the classroom and teach in the kindergarten in 2020. This was a testament to her love of learning and the compassion and knowledge she has for early childhood development. Her lessons always promote high expectations for academics and social-emotional learning, independence, and curiosity. Prior to her tenure in Lebanon, she spent 27 years serving as a classroom teacher, a reading and language arts consultant, and an elementary school principal. While at LES, she has served as the team leader for intervention services, pre-K to 4 language arts coordinator, and a member of the student support team. One administrator said, "Greta has been a friend, mentor, and leader to many at LES, and she will be greatly missed." Congratulations, Greta. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I would like to say that my career has taken me on many paths, all the way up to being a principal, which I hated. And I knew that I really wanted to retire from the classroom, and I appreciate that the district honored that request because I can't think of any better way to go out than having 19 kids that I've been with all year long and watch them grow and learn, and that's really what teaching is all about for me.
Thank you, Greta. And Jeanette Picard. Jeanette has been a reading and language arts consultant at Lebanon Middle School for the past 19 years and collectively has over 40 years of experience as an educator. She spent many years in the district directing the school newspaper club, serving as team leader for intervention services, a member of the SAM team, a team mentor, and fulfilling the role of teachers' union co-president and president. And she also helped with the bags of cookies that are in front of you today.
Thank you.
Jeanette's experience allows her to see the importance of both the big picture in terms of the systems that make a school run effectively, as well as the small, daily interactions with her students that form the basis for the most important component of education: relationship. As a first-year administrator, Mr. Johnson said, "I've been able to garner advice from Jeanette that ranged from how to better incorporate our intervention program into the fabric of our school, to advice on how to approach faculty members when an issue arose that I felt would potentially ruffle feathers." Watching Jeanette go from a PDEC meeting where she actively assisted in developing district-wide system directly to a classroom full of kids or working on the school newspaper showed the range of levels in which it will be difficult to replace her. And I was able to sneak out and go to a little retirement gathering today, and the venue in which it was held was packed with vehicles. And I walked into Mr. McLean sharing some words of all Jeanette did, and it didn't even make the list, but she would go to all of the track-and-field events and man the long-jump pitch. She definitely did it all for our district, so thank you for all that you've done, Jeanette.
So I just want to thank you, the members of the Board. I've spent many nights at these meetings. I felt welcomed by all of you and welcomed by the community. I was at Parrishell for 20 years and never thought I would find another school home. So it's been wonderful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, just off the top of the board, just like what Andy said, you know, we are truly grateful for all of your dedication and hard work that you have put into everything, you know. The reason we're on the Board is because we believe in supporting students and giving the students, you know, the best possible education. You are such a huge part of that. So just from the bottom of my heart, and hopefully from everybody's heart, you know, just thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to communication. We do have some letters of resignation.
So the first letter of resignation comes from Jennifer Landry, who's a paraeducator in our district. She writes, "I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have worked in a position for the past year and a half. I've learned a great deal in my time here and have enjoyed collaborating with my colleagues." And she's let me know that she's very interested in staying on as a substitute, just is not working out with the full schedule with her family, and we're appreciative of all Jen has done for us while she's been a full-time employee and look forward to taking her up on that offer to sub. The second resignation I have is from Gabrielle Laskerzuski, who is an instructional tutor at the middle school. Her last day will be Wednesday, June 12th, and she will not be returning next year. She said, "Thank you so much," and she wishes us all the best. And the letter of retirement is actually from Rumah. She writes that her decision to retire effective the end of the school year on June 13, 2024, was difficult but necessary for her family. She appreciates the opportunity and trusts that she was given to work with the students in Lebanon for almost 25 years. She values the professional opportunities that were available, which helped her embrace growth and change for herself and students.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point in the agenda, it's up to an opportunity for public participation. According to the Lebanon Board of Education bylaws, the Board will allocate up to 30 minutes for public participation, with each individual speaker allocated two minutes. At this point, are there any members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Yes.
Yay.
And the mic is on.
Could you state your name and address?
I have it right here. My name is Maureen McCall. I live at 127 McCall Road in Lebanon, in case you were interested. I am speaking in reaction to a snide comment I heard at a meeting I was at a few weeks ago. I heard that now in Lebanon schools, we have stooped to teaching kids from comic books. I understand that we want to expose the students to all sorts of genres: plays, novels, even poetry, short stories, and graphic novels. But that, but why are we overloading on graphic novels? I was taking minutes in April when the Board approved all of the books on the list, excepting The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night. I was pleased that the Board members were doing what they were selected to do: looking out for the welfare of our students. The book was voted down because of its content. I then made it a point to go to the library to skim over the content of the next books to be offered for review. Needless to say, I was quite taken aback by the content. There's profanity, nudity, violence, and I found most of what I zeroed in on downright depressing. I watched the May meeting and took note of the various points of view. The head of the English department was alarmed that someone might object based on religious beliefs. I don't know, because I was not at that meeting. Besides, this world is not only filled with atheists, there's Jews, Christians, Hindus, and Islamists, to mention a few, and they all have their own morality. She said that they do what is best for the interests of the students, and I sure hope so. There is a claim that the topics covered are all around us, and the students see it every day. They have their social media. Does that mean that we need to add to their overload on all the negative aspects of our culture? Why are the themes so dark? If we are finding more students considering suicide, should we really spend class time loading them up on more depressing topics? And as to the profanity, sure, they may well hear the same thing at home or out on the street, but aren't we indicating that profanity is fine with us here at Lyman? I always felt that those who have to resort to profanity were just uneducated and couldn't think of any better words to use. It's a sad state of affairs when the best literature we can offer to our students to help them achieve in this world is some of the things that I saw in the books at the library. And I see the book is back on the agenda today, so I guess the squeaky wheel does get the grease. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Eric?
Good evening. Is it on?
Yeah.
I just have to say my name.
Yes, please, and address.
Sure. I'm Dr. Eric Pearson. I live at 1413 Exeter Road, here in town. I come to you tonight not as an educator or the husband of one of the Board members, but as a pastor in my local church. I'd like to explain why Mr. Hayden's play is so offensive to Christians. What I'm about to explain is mainstream, run-of-the-mill Christian doctrine. Although many people believe taking the Lord's name in vain refers to using the Lord's name as a swear word, there is much more involved with the vain use of God's name. God's nature and attributes, the totality of His being, and especially His glory, are reflected in His name. Christians believe His name is holy and awesome. And the Lord's prayer begins by addressing God with the phrase, "Hallowed be Your name," an indication that a reverence for God and His name should be foremost in our prayers. Too often, we barge into God's presence with presumptuous to-do lists for Him, without being mindful of His holiness, His awesomeness, and the vast chasm that separates our nature from His. That we are even allowed to come before His throne is due only to His gracious, merciful love. We must never take that for granted. Because of the greatness of the name of God, any use of God's name that brings dishonor on Him or on His character is taking His name in vain. There's a larger sense in which people today take the Lord's name in vain. Those whose name, the name of Christ, who even pray His name and who take His name as part of their identity, but who deliberately and continually disobey His commands are taking His name in vain. Jesus Christ has been given the name above all names, at which every knee shall bow. And when we take the name Christian upon ourselves, we must do so with an understanding of all that signifies. If we profess to be Christians but act, think, and speak, and I'm speaking for myself, in a worldly or profane manner, I take the name of the Lord in vain. When we misrepresent Christ, when I, either intentionally or through ignorance of the Christian faith as proclaimed in Scripture, we take the Lord's name in vain. When we say we love Him but do not do what He commands, we take His name in vain and are possibly identifying ourselves to be among those whom Christ will say in the Book of Matthew that "I never knew you." The name of the Lord is holy as He is holy. The name of the Lord is a representation of His glory, His majesty, and His supreme deity. We are to esteem and honor His name as we revere and glorify God Himself. To do any less is to take His name in vain. Please do not be disrespectful to these beliefs when choosing primary source material in a flippant English course. It would be akin to bringing in Salman Rushdie's novel, The Satanic Verses, to a predominantly Muslim population in the name of education, which would be unheard of. I can think of nothing more diabolical. But if you insist, I respectfully request that this document be part of the classroom teaching of this blasphemous play. As far as censorship is concerned, schools have been censoring for centuries. They just call it normal, ordinary, reasonable, and prudent decency. Remember, the trouble with normal is it always gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll bounce to consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Alexis. Any discussion?
Share, just a question. The, I know that there, I believe, going off of memory, there was a book re-added to the agenda that we had voted down. Was that, is that correct, a couple months ago? Is that back on the agenda again?
It is back on the agenda. It is back on the agenda in a, in the wrong way, so we will, we will get to that if, unless you would like to make a motion to amend it.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misunderstanding something. Okay. All right, great.
No problem. How about the consent agenda? Any discussion on that? No? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that is Dawn, Rachel, Andrew, Alexis, Sarah, Nicole, and Brian. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? Sharon's abstaining. Okay, we'll move on to our student representatives report.
Perfect. I'll try not to talk your ear off this time, because I know it's the last one, but there's a lot of things that have been happening throughout all three schools. So the first one for LES, Lyman came to Mayfest. I know they had a blast seeing all the different artwork that the high schoolers put on, and then I don't know if they incorporated that into their artwork that they did for their art show a few weeks back, but their art show was actually really cool. There were a lot of paper sculptures, which I, they're really hard to do. You saw them? They're really hard to do. You twist them and make them tight, you can sculpt them into different things. It was really impressive. There was the Buy One Get One Free Book Fair. I learned that, I think, an 18th Diary of a Wimpy Kid came out. When I left there, we were at 10, but anyway. The Class of '26, so Cassidy's grade, actually put on a glow dance for the elementary school. 70 kids showed up, their parents showed up, the class raised like $500, right, about that? Yeah, so it was, it was a great success for that class, and the kids had a blast, too. They had Field Day, they had events like a pizza box carry, so it was a relay. They would have a pizza box, run from one end, run back, have their teammate get the other one. They had donuts with grownups. I know that was really fun. I always loved the little grownup getting the parents involved in their education. That always goes well. Fourth grade celebration, they had kickball against the parents. The parents lost, wait, I believe they lost, but they felt the consequences anyway after the day. That did not go well with them. That is, that is a direct quote from one of the parents I talked to that week. A direct quote. They had PBIS assembly. Some of the fourth graders went to Lyman, I mean, went to LMS to get acquainted with their new school. They went, I think, class by class, so that LMS didn't get too overcrowded, but they said it was a good school. They said that they're very excited to go next year. They had a Science Center Assembly, which I believe went well. The Moving Up Ceremony for all the fourth graders. I think they're very excited to come to the middle school. Isn't, is your son a fourth grader this year?
No.
He's not? Okay. Okay, that's what I thought. They had Spirit Week for the last week of school. I believe this week is their Spirit Week. So yesterday, they had Husky Pride. Is that right, Ms. Corso, this week? Sports Day is today, tomorrow is Beach Day, and then on Thursday, they have Red, White, and Blue Day. So that should be going really well. Do a lot, did a lot of kids participate already? Good, good. And I think they're excited for their half-days coming forward. And then for LMS, we have a lot of sports that ended. Baseball ended their season in the semifinals in the NEMSAAC against Coventry. That was a tough game, I think. They put up a good fight, but Coventry's a hard team to beat. Softball ended their season in the quarterfinals against Vernon in the NEMSAAC Conference. They had their Field Day at Audita. I know the kids had a blast with that. My brother came home soaking wet. They do wish they had a little bit longer of a time there, though, and as any kid would. Mr. Johnson slept on the roof. He slept on the roof. I got feedback. He said the birds were not too pleasant in the morning at 4:00. And what, did you catch the Squishmellows name that the sixth-grade team gave you?
No.
You didn't look at the name?
No, what was the name?
I don't know, Emma. I don't know. Because Squishmellows always come with a little name and then a story, a background that they have.
I'll have to go look and see.
You should. The band played in the Memorial Day Parade, as well as Lyman's band. I think they had a good time. I don't think it was too hot that day, but in, wearing all black for LMS colors, definitely gets sweaty throughout the day. Track season ended, 18, crazy. We are a super-small school, and 18 of our track athletes went to states, qualified, like Elizabeth Pearson, she qualified for five events. One of the highlights was Luke DePiano. He got first in shot put with a PR of, I believe, 40 feet and 11 inches, which is insane for a middle-schooler. The bike and hike was a really good time. I know a lot of kids bike to school, and they had a good time with that. The Historical Society said it went really well, so I think it was an overall good, good field trip. They had the dressy dance. That's always fun. Their yearbooks came out with pictures of the dressy dance in it. The yearbooks looked really nice. Eighth graders are getting a lot of signing opportunities. Grade East, they got silver, which isn't bad at all. Quite good. And then they had Six Flags. They had a lot of time, but obviously the lines are really long at Six Flags, so they had to wait a lot. Did Gabe go on that one?
No.
No?
No, not music.
Eighth grade had their celebration with a dunk booth. I believe Ms. Archer got dunked a few times. There's a lot of eighth-grade stuff, a lot of like senior, fourth, eighth-grade stuff, because they're wrapping up their year with a bang. The eighth grade went on their trip to the subbase instead of DC. Well, I really wish they went on DC, but that's okay. Someone claimed it was the best pizza that they've had, which obviously he didn't have enough pizza to like compare that to. And then finally, I found this out yesterday, the sixth grade won the S-Bac readiness competition. So I don't know if you guys remember me talking about it last month, about how they had like percentages of how much their class was ready for S-Bac and had their readiness cards. Sixth grade won that, so tomorrow, they essentially, no, it was today. They essentially got a half-day, so they had their classes, and then the rest of the day was like a pizza party and getting to sign yearbooks and just having a fun time. And then for Lyman, we have sports wrapping up. Boys' baseball, they won their ECC Division Four champs with a record of 8-0, which is insane impressive. Ag Expo, that was super fun, learned a lot of things. I got to hold a snake, like that was really cool. The softball season ended their season in the ECC Playoff Game against Motville. The score was 13-17, Motville. They put up a good fight. I think they could have taken Motville if they put a little more oomph in it, but that's okay. I don't know what to say at some of the times, because I don't want to be repetitive. Anyway, Pearson Coleman, Lauren Lambert, and Justin Wright, and Linda Lee Mercado passed their CNA courses, and so they got to go to Three Rivers and get a little certificate for that. They also got recognized at the award ceremony last Wednesday for completing that. And then the Drama Kids went on a New York City trip, spent the day there. They watched Wicked on Broadway. They had a blast, obviously. Who doesn't want to go to New York City? We had Field Day at Lyman with events like Cornhole, there was face painting, there was a trivia, there was volleyball. What else was there?
I think there might have been a tennis. I didn't go.
Tennis. Oh. Anyway, Field Day was really fun. People had a really fun time. The Ag Banquet happened. It's a banquet. People said it was really long. They had to sit through it, but that's okay, they overcame. Baseball got second in the ECC D3 and D4. They lost against Wheeler, taking the ECC title, but baseball did amazing this year. Speaking of baseball, Dominic Pompriant, he's a senior. He was picked as the ECC Player of the Year, and that's an insane, congratulations to him. Riley Benway got All-State for softball, as well as an ECC All-Star with Loretta Sodarsky, so they're both, this is Riley's third consecutive year of getting All-State, which is majorly impressive, and I'm really sad she's not continuing in college. The Talent Show happened with a bake sale. Senior Emma Amelia won with her song choice of "Ironic" by Alana Morissette. It's Alana, right?
Alanis.
Alanis. I'm so sorry. We had Project Grad at Quasi. It was super fun. We had rides until 1:30 in the morning. A magician came around, he stole my ring, put it in his keychain, really impressive. Jenga, we had Jenga. If you want to hear a funny story, it fell on my head. Yep. Laurel and Boyer got six in states and, um, Track had their state opens. How many, do you know how many people went to state opens? Was it like five?
Yeah.
About five of them?
Yeah.
I think it was Kyle Franchi, Laurel and Boyer, Hazel Delucia.
Emily McKelvey.
Yeah, Emily McKelvey.
Kyle Franchi.
Did I mention Kyle?
Yeah.
I think so.
Nick Sabriano.
Yes. He was for hurdles, I believe. Yeah. So a lot of kids went to Lyman for opens, which is mad impressive, because that's like another step up from states. And then Boys' Tennis ended their season with a record of 1-12, with amazing performances from Brody Raymond, Luke Spelman, and Clark Smithwick. They're all gonna be staying. None of them are seniors, so that's nice that the tennis team will have returning key players for next season. Girls' tennis ended with a season record of 2-10, which isn't bad. Tennis is really hard. Like, the records seem bad, but they're, it's really hard to beat other teams, especially like East Lyman, Waterford. Waterford has a, like a four-time ECC championship singles player. She's amazing. Anyway. Mr. Johnson got the Teacher of the Year. That was also recognized at the award ceremony for Lyman last Wednesday. Super well-deserving. He has a hand in everything that happens at Lyman. He coordinates the schedules for every year. He started up the new pass system. He directed and like manned stage crews for three productions that happened this year. One of them being The Price of Healing, written by Senior Emma Amelia for her senior project. It's a quick, it was like a 45-minute thing. I'm really sad you guys didn't get to see it. It was great. She, she did an amazing job. It was basically about two friends, they're roommates. One of them is sick, but they don't have enough money to pay for the health insurance or the cost of the doctor's appointments. So she finds like stolen goods, the main character tries to sell them for the money, they don't get the money. But it was really good. Emma did such a good job with that, and that was co-directed by Emma and Mr. Johnson. So he literally has a hand in everything. And then finally, the Class of 2025 voted on a new president and Board. And then finally, the Class of 2025 voted on a new president and board. Rowan LaFleur is the president and vice president is junior Erica Arvin. Well, both of them are juniors, but. That's all I got. That's all I got.
So great.
I talked their ears off. Thank you guys for listening to me through the whole year, by the way. I really appreciate it and being a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Of course.
So entertained by you. You were such a light.
I know it can get boring sometimes, so I try to make it fun.
You do make it fun. Your energy and your sense of humor is wonderful.
Well, good luck, Avery. Thank you. You don't have to say, unless you want to ask you comments.
Can we introduce?
Please.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you.
So, yes, before, you know, we take off, this is Cassidy Marzen. Cassidy is a sophomore who will be a junior next year. So Cassidy and Holden, who you met last time, are going to be our co-student reps. So we have one junior and we'll have one senior. So Cassidy, when, you know, after next year, she'll be a senior, she'll still be in that role and we'll look for a new junior each year.
I like that.
Fantastic.
Isn't it, it is a good idea.
Welcome.
Thank you, Cassidy. You're going to have a blast next year. Thank you guys. Thank you for letting me be a part this year. I will miss each and every one of you dearly. I will stay in contact and try to log in when I'm, when I'm at college.
Thanks, Avery.
Thanks. Thank you, Avery.
I'll try. I'll send, I'll send a picture of myself in front of you. You all of you guys.
Do you have a presentation for the end of the year data?
I can lead into that while the, the team gets ready to, to present, so. Sharing our student growths as it relates to academic performance is extremely important to us and we've been very reflective year over year with looking for ways that even though our students are doing well, what can we take away from the data and how can that help springboard us into future initiatives and, and goal setting for the following year. In this presentation in particular, as we connect it to the Lebanon Board of Ed goals, you're going to see our tenacious pursuit of continuous improvement and also how we promoted a sense of belonging and a welcoming, positive school atmosphere because several of the slides you'll see today are around social emotional learning and how we use the data from different assessments to, to enhance that particular goal. Thankful for the team again. I know we do this three times a year and it's not an easy ask and I appreciate the team for putting this together, reviewing the data and, and being here to share tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Rita and the rest of the team.
Did you already go over the goals? Are you good?
Okay, let's go. We'll keep sliding through this. Thank you again for your time. We're going to have, as we usually do, the school buildings will come and join me. But as you know, we keep our focus and our intentions always on our strategic goal or our district building goals and our decisions are all based on such. So just to highlight and remind you, this school page was on all of our data presentations throughout the school year that the school community will provide a safe, a positive, respectful, and inclusive culture that demonstrates a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And there are descriptors. And so one of the ways we wanted to follow up, as we've shared throughout the year, is our focus on the DESA, specifically our social emotional learning of our students. And so Dawn will outline the following slides as far as the post DESA results. Your slideshow, just to note, is in your packet. The numbers are slightly different. I don't know if you want to share a little bit about that.
So I apologize. When I pulled the slides that are in your presentation, it was from one school and this on the screen right now is for the whole district and we really want to look at the whole district. And I had gone in to look at it more closely because I knew that the numbers were kind of small and I wouldn't be able to see them. So when you look at that, you know, it doesn't look great that our need didn't, didn't change much. It went up actually 1%. But what's really good is our green increase. So that really shows that our tier one interventions are working. So we can go to the next slide. And this is my favorite one because this one is, the circles on the left are where we started and that it shows that the students, the students that were at need had, twenty-nine of them. I actually can't see from here anyway, so. So twenty-one were at need and twelve still are, but the others moved out of that area and that's what's really important. And we can even see that we had typical students move to the strength. And that's, again, what we want to see is the movement. So the positives is looking at students who moved five points or more from the pre to the post. At LES, thirty-eight percent of them moved, made improvements. LMS, fifty percent, and LMHS, sixty percent were improvements. And then when I met with the counselors, all students receiving intervention at LES and LMS moved out of the need for instruction. So after the first rating, groups were formed and of those groups formed, all of those students moved out. So that was very positive. The challenges, this year we implemented student self-rating at LMS. So some of the data was much different than the teacher rating, so it was kind of, kind of, the counselors and staff had to figure out how to address the different, different ratings. But that's the purpose of it, how students see themselves versus how teachers see them. So, and also there were lots of bugs to make it time-consuming. But I just had a DESA meeting today and they've made lots of improvements for next year, so that will be positive. And our next steps are at LES, they're going to start, the counselors will start in the kindergarten classrooms before the first rating. They're going to start doing the zones of regulation and giving instruction on social emotional learning. At LMS, we're going to implement those student self-ratings and again, the negatives from this year, hopefully were fixed with what Achar came up with and that will just be in grade six through eight. And at LMHS, they're going to, instead of groups, they do more check-ins there, so they're going to explore some curriculum that can be used amongst all of the counseling staff.
Thank you. Our next school focuses on the student learning piece and that students will be active learners who have opportunities to read their learning. So the following few slides will be focusing on the elementary school. And we have Stephanie, our Delucia, our instructional professional, of course, yes, the principal. And again, this is data that you've seen. We've tried to be consistent so we could, you know, you could see the trend of how things are going through the course of the school year.
Hi, so this is our DIBELS data. Just to remind you, the state had mandated a universal screen for all students in grades K to three this year. So Lebanon had chose, the platform's called M-Class and the assessment is called DIBELS. So DIBELS has a variety of assessments, so I just pulled the main ones that we've been focusing on this year. So for kindergarten, nonsense word fluency, so that's just seeing if the kids can take their sounds and blend them and start to read. So as you can see, we had huge growth. The beginning of the year, only five percent of our students could sound blend and then now we have, half of our students are able to sound blend those nonsense words. And again, these are normed assessments, so they, they're certain, they're timed and there are certain benchmarks that they need to get to. In first grade, we also looked at nonsense word fluency and we moved from forty-two percent to sixty-eight percent. And then in second grade, oral reading fluency is more of a passage, so they're reading not nonsense words, but real words within paragraphs. We moved from thirty-seven percent to fifty percent and third grade, same thing, thirty-five percent to seventy-eight percent.
The next slide shows the benchmark assessment system and you'll see improvements in each grade level here as well. Particularly, if I could bring your attention to the kindergarten growth, which was just from winter to spring. On that previous page, it shows some of the assessment for foundational skills, which really attributed to some of these scores too for kindergarten.
And this is our iReady school data. We did give third and fourth grade the iReady diagnostic, the spring one in March. We really wanted to keep it away from S-Back. We found that having the two back-to-back was a lot. After reflection, the teachers are very happy that they did that. They want to continue that practice. But keeping that in mind, they're getting their instruction. We're seeing that growth from September to March, but they are missing a little bit of the instruction. So that's something we're just keeping an eye on, but we think it's well worth keeping it away from S-Back because it's just too much testing at once for them. So in kindergarten, they take this assessment in January and then again in May and they went from fifty-four percent in the winter to eighty-eight percent of their students at or above grade level in reading, which is amazing. And then seventy-three percent at or above grade level in math. And then you can see first grade reading up to seventy-four percent and then in math, sixty-two percent, second grade, sixty-nine percent. Their math growth was amazing. So at the beginning of the year, we only had six percent of our second graders at or above on this particular assessment and they moved to sixty-six percent by the end of the year, which is huge growth. Same with third grade, eight percent to forty-seven. Again, maybe if we gave that in end of April, May, we would have seen a little bit more growth. Again, we, we like where we have the iReady for third grade. And then fourth grade, you can see the fifty-eight percent and sixty-two percent. So school-wide, seventy-four percent of our students are at or above grade level in reading on this particular assessment and in math, sixty-four percent.
The next two slides show the growth in the area of reading and then the next slide will be math. So this is school-wide, the growth that we made this year. We want to see at least a hundred percent in reading, we need a hundred and eighteen percent.
And then in math, you can see we only are just under a hundred percent. We got to the ninety-two percent. Again, we have that third and fourth grade outlier. But this was definitely more of a growth between winter to spring. So wintertime, we were a little nervous. We were farther below that fifty percent mark. So we definitely were happy that we moved up closer to the hundred percent mark.
Some celebrations. One celebration that is kind of hot off the press is our decrease in chronic absenteeism, which is a big boost because that leads into averaging, including our data growth too. So as of Friday, we had a decrease of thirty-one percent for chronic absenteeism, so that's a great success. Typical growth, as we reviewed already, typical growth for reading was a hundred and eighteen percent. We had the growth for math at ninety-two. In particular, grade two, that growth was from six to sixty-two, sixty-six percent. And then our kindergarten, most impressive, they went from five percent to fifty-one percent with those nonsense words.
If I, if I could add, you seemed to have talked about the kind of relationship between that sense of belonging and some of these academic performance pieces. So students are chronically absent if they're absent more than ten percent of the school year. So if you think about how many days of instruction they were missing if they're out for eighteen days of school. So to have thirty-one percent decrease, that much more time was spent in the classroom and I can definitely see why we've had such great gains because they're spending more time in their seat with their teachers receiving that quality instruction.
These are some key takeaways from the year. We definitely found that the new DIBELS universal screener was helping us identify literacy deficits more early on, so we were able to push into kindergarten classrooms, being more proactive with those. So those universal screens have been very helpful and we'll continue to focus on those next year. Next year, we'll have more explicit tier two intervention. So right now, we provide tier two intervention. It's a little loose, but we've already begun to tighten that up. Teachers will be accountable for progress monitoring every ten days. So we'll be keeping more careful track on those students that need that little extra boost within their classroom. All students in K to two will have structured literacy instruction with our new reading programs, which will be huge. We'll have magnetic reading for phonics and then we'll have Sabas Myu Literacy for reading and writing. We'll be focusing more on our math unit data. We do look at that data, but I think that we can dig in a little bit more to that and provide, use that data to provide more intervention in tier two. And then again, we will have one reading program that's going to provide equity of instruction to all of our students in K to four next year.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move on to the middle school, which will focus on the iReady data.
My sister makes it sound like she knows who she's talking about. So we have our iReady data here. You can see that in fifth grade, they improved by fifteen percent from fall to spring, twenty percent in grade six for reading, a fifteen percent improvement in grade seven and a seven percent improvement in grade eight. So our average reading improvement across the school was fourteen percent. And on the math side, we saw thirty-seven percent improvement in grade five, twenty-eight percent in grade six, nineteen percent improvement in grade seven, and twenty-three percent in grade eights for an average improvement of twenty-three percent. So good stuff there. If you want to skip to the next one, I think it, and one more. There we go. So the growth goal is the one that's a little hard to understand. The, on the iReady, you will, depending on what their score is, and of course, every kid's going to score at a different level and different spots, so wherever they're at, we're looking for them to improve from where they're at, you know, and keep going from there. So what they do is they create a growth goal, which is the percentage that the median student at each grade level is making towards their typical growth. So the goal is one hundred percent. All grades saw gains. The median math growth goal was a hundred fifty-eight percent of goal and for reading, the median was a hundred eighty-three percent of their growth goal. In terms of some celebrations, sixty-one percent of students in math on iReady were at or above grade level. Sixty-two percent of the students in reading were at or above grade level. All students saw, all grade levels saw gains. And just some key takeaways. So MTSS, we created, we used MTSS Day, took a page from the elementary school and met as a team to develop more targeted intervention groups for students. We also doubled the amount of interventions that we're giving, so instead of just our intervention specialists doing it, the grade level teachers were being broken out into small groups too. So we're casting a wider net to address the tier two interventions with students. We're particularly pleased with how some of our extrinsic and intrinsic motivations work with students. It's like sleeping on the roof and what have you. A lot of that is, will be, I think, more representative with S-Back as opposed to the iReady, which we consider more of just a diagnostic tool. So while we're not ready to share that data, that's going to be something that's going to be a real highlight for us that we're, we're looking forward to be able to share with you. And, you know, along with the iReady program that we have and the work that we do with Connecticut Science Center and with East Con, there's been a lot that's done in the classrooms to work on tier one strategies as well that we think have contributed to growth as well. And while I didn't offer up any data right now in terms of the behavior, the improvements in chronic attendance, our improvements in teacher attendance, those are things that I know I've touched upon here in the past and looking forward to. Kind of like wrapping that in a bow once we've got our final day of school and presenting some of that data to you in the future as well, along with the S-Back stuff.
And we're finishing up at Lyman with our PSAT and SAT scores with Jay and Sue.
I was just going to go over here, so I want to, I just want to like point this out here. This side from, you know, all the way to here represents 2022, 2023 data. This side here represents the data from this school year. So when you're looking at it, if you can think about this on like a diagonal, that's the group as they went through. So the grade nine here represents, is represented over here by grade ten. Grade ten here is represented by grade eleven, just so that you can, you can see that on there. Couple of things to, you know, like to, to point out. The number of tests that are taken by grade increases as you go down. The eight, it's called the eight-nine PSAT. If you look at the number of total students in the state of Connecticut that test, it's very small. I want to say. I want to say, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but I think it was like, maybe, you know, 8,000 to 10,000 kids in all of Connecticut took that. It's a very small number. When you look at grade 11, that's every junior in the state of Connecticut takes that, okay? You know, especially the SAT, because that's the one that, that counts for that. So I just want you to know, like, the number of tests taken increases also statewide as you go through this. Couple of things to point out. 480 represents benchmark for the evidence-based reading and writing, which is like the, you know, English, you know, language arts ones, evidence, you know, evidence-based reading and writing. 480 is benchmark. So our average is above the benchmark for the SATs. And that's the same over here for this year. And that, this year, that number was especially strong. 505 is, you know, it's 25 points over what that benchmark is. One of the things you'll see when we start talking about data is some things we want to take a look at with math.
I'll just say, I'll take a look at this. Lisa, this is the science, the NGSS test for our 11th grade students. They take it in eighth grade and then again in 11th. And you can see the growth. There's no way to not see it. It's amazing. We're so proud of our science teachers, all their efforts this year, analyzing the data, using the resources that Rita has provided for us, and working so hard with our science department.
So, I mean, looking through that, you can see some things that we wanted to point out. We did see growth from the PSATs to the SATs. 46 of our students that, you know, it's not a percent. That's 46 of those students scored higher on the SATs than they did on the PSAT. And again, you can look down through and see, you know, growth in the evidence-based reading and writing and in the math. That's pretty impressive, too. 10 of the students improved their score by 100 points, and one improving theirs by 170 from the PSAT to the SAT. We talked about what the max gain was for that evidence-based reading and writing, and that was from the PSAT to the SAT, both of those. And pretty much each group, on average, grew. I think there was one, if I remember, I think it was math, I think, went down eight points from PSAT to SAT on average for the, for the whole test. And again, that's, you know, we put it at the bottom. I probably should have led with the NGSS. But that is, it's just a huge turnaround, but it's a change in philosophy for how they, they actually administered that test. We used to have our students take the test all together, like, all the students would do it together in the cafeteria. And the cafeteria, if you've been down there, there's no backs on, you know, the seats, and it's maybe not the most comfortable. And, you know, the philosophy at the time was to try and get as many people testing as we could. We threw that out, and then we started individual rooms with teachers, and it made a huge difference. You know, reading it off just like it was the, they were taking the SATs, teachers read directions. And there was just a change in folk, a change in, like, the presentation, but a change in how it was administered made all the difference in the world. Kids took it more seriously. You know, there were kids that first year that we put up there where 39% were at proficiency. There would be way more students at proficiency. There should have been. But, you know, they just hurried through it, and we're done, and we're out. Now, they were sitting in their chairs, they're in a classroom, they're thinking, you know, like, they're, they're thinking that they're taking a test just like PSATs, SATs, and then the scores went up.
We up to the first bullet. As you already mentioned, the scrap of facilities, we certainly have room to grow in math. We've already met with the math department and Rita, and kind of came up with a plan, an action plan, started proposing things, just taking a deeper dive, and we're going to continue that effort moving forward.
And, you know, our, our science department, you know, they're not ones to just, like, sit back and say, "Yeah, I did a good job." You know, "We're done." They're, they're looking at ways they can make improvements, too. They're looking at where their students, you know, even though 61% of them were proficient, how can they increase that number a little bit more? And they're looking at, you know, potentially little tweaks and, you know, how they can better prepare those students. That next bullet, the third bullet, kind of ties into the, the first bullet. 17 of our students met the math benchmark. Now, math benchmark is very high on the, on the number. It's 530. That's what you have to be to meet the benchmark on the SATs. It's a high number. 17 of our students met that benchmark. Nine students had scores between 500 and 520. So, you know, one of the things we want to talk with our math department about is, you know, how do we get those, those nine students up, and how do we get more students getting themselves closer and closer to that benchmark? If you look at the, you know, the evidence-based reading and writing, 51 of our students met that benchmark. And if you look, there's a huge number of kids meeting that benchmark. There's only three that were in that really... I just picked that number. There's no reason why I said 20, you know, 20 points there. But I just want to show, like, how many people were close. There was only three students that were really, really close. So now, we want to think about, too, like, how can we impact more and get more of our students closer? Because eventually, if we get them closer, they're going to reach that benchmark. You know, our school improvement and climate committees, we are going to be meeting over the summer. We do things where we get our teachers together, and we'll buy them lunch, and we'll have those kinds of discussions on things that we can do to help promote growth in our students and getting them, you know, what can we tweak to help our students meet the goals that we know, we, you know, we know that they can do that. So how can we get the best of them? Again, remember, you know, you know, these are, like, I don't know, that's one-shot tests that we give twice a year, right? But it's one shot, you know, to, to do that. And then we are still, you know, one of the things we're working on, and it is actually in the ASK recommendation, is working on our student support for interventions. So what can we do to intervene with students to help them be more successful? And it is, it's in the ASK recommendation that we're going to be working on, and we're going to be tweaking those, those systems to help kids.
Thank you to the team for your time tonight and for all the work that you put into the presentation. We will take a little bit of time to celebrate and enjoy the, the data that we have. But we're actually going to be meeting with the State Department of Education the following week. A team from the state's coming out is going to do a deep dive into the EdSite data warehouse that they've created, show us how we can best analyze data for individual students, for cohorts of kids, for particular schools and grade levels. From that, we'll be using our own data as a springboard for developing next-year goals already. So the leadership team was vocal about wanting to do that process earlier in the summer, so they had even more time to action plan. And as we get into other parts of the agenda, it's pretty exciting to see how all these pieces come together and funnel into strategic plan and whatnot.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Are special ed students included in these tests and these results? So all students take the same test?
There's a small number that may take that, yeah. It's a very small number, but when you look at it...
Three students.
Yeah.
That take, like, the alternate NGSS test.
An alternate one?
Yeah, three students have.
And are their scores...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And congratulations on your success.
Thank you guys for that presentation.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? I didn't want to rush you. Thank you, guys. All right, well, we'll ask the reports of the committee. Dawn, can I start with you?
You can.
We will be going... We will be discussing your committee later.
Yes.
All right, Rachel, mine now.
We met this evening for the 2023-24 budget. There is no new surprises as of yet, so we're still looking at a small surplus that we're going to enter the nonlapsing fund. We also discussed the Student Activity Fund. Our business manager, Martha, prepared a Student Activity Quick Reference Guide that will be disseminated to the appropriate staff. She's highlighted some policy items that we, that they are aware of and will need to be updated, and we will work on that in the next coming months with the Policy Committee. And she's already starting to clean that up, and has closed over 60 accounts that were not necessary, and will continue to work on the Student Activity Fund, cleaning it up.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Andrew Clement Culture.
All right, okay. We met tonight. Let's see.
Curriculum met tonight.
Curriculum met tonight. Correct. All right, so our leader and teacher evaluation plan presentation Rita presented. Schools are implementing a new process for teacher evaluations that's been understudied through many months. It is state mandated, or at least parts of it, if I understand correctly. Some highlights of the new plan are that it involves many stakeholders besides the teacher with greater collaboration toward goal achievement. Feedback is also a really key element. Pre-K, also presented by Rita. 14 families are now enrolled with paid deposits. So what's the anticipated rollout next year is on target. Accreditation standards are being adhered to. So everything is going to be airtight, I think. May, professional development follow-up was on Friday, May 24th. That wasn't very long ago. I think there wasn't much to be reported on that. Which also seems late in the year. So summer, we're talking about summer professional development as the next topic, and plans for that include elementary school music development and some leadership training. And then the final topic was the ELA Department New Book Discussion, which was relatively brief, still more kind of animated discussions on, on the topics and the books that are, that are presented. So, that's tonight. That was it.
Any questions? Okay, Alexis, associations or teaching security?
Neither of that. No report.
Is it now curriculum?
Sorry, I'm late. Sort of.
Graduation.
Yes, I was at a graduation, so I'm not really sorry, but anyway. So we met twice since the last meeting. May 21st, we had a very large presentation. Long time coming for the K-4 reading pilot program, and I've got a great packet here. I'm sure Rita would have available, if anyone wants to look at it, of the whole process that it took throughout the year to narrow it down to the Savis learning curriculum. And there are two textbooks up for approval tonight that go along with the K-4 state-mandated new reading program. So, a lot of work here. Next item on that agenda was the Lebanon Literacy Plan. This is required by the state of Connecticut. So Rita shared the whole program for that as well, required by, I just said it's required by the state of Connecticut. This is our literacy plan, very detailed. And if I recall correctly, she said, putting this into paper form and looking at it just shows we've already been doing this, right? Just kind of filled in the boxes and said, "Look, we're doing a good job." We had to make this up formally, but we're already doing it. So that was the second item on that agenda. The third item of that agenda was for any board members that wanted to attend. We had book discussions to prepare for board vote. So that was on May 21st. And then we met again this past Tuesday, June, wait a minute, I'm getting all confused now.
Fourth, right?
June 4th was the last meeting. We had this a week ago. And that was the discussion for the full board about books. Whoever came, I think Alexis, Sarah, and Dawn and I were there. And unfortunately, my committee members couldn't come because of emergencies, and Rita also had to leave pretty quick. But in that meeting, we got copies of the draft curriculum for the new books. And they kind of, the teachers, we asked them to do this, so they did this in pretty good timing for it. They're not complete, but it gives us a better idea of how some of the books are going to be used. And they're still work in progress, but I think they're going to be working on it at the beginning of summer, maybe? End of school year, hopefully getting as much done as possible, or the start at the end of August. And I think that's it.
Any questions?
And then thank you, Andrew, for your summary of tonight's meeting that I could not attend.
Okay, you have all facilities?
All right, facilities met this evening. We began talking about the LES gym floor, which materially, materially will be brought to LES on June 17th. It's a four-to-five-week process in which they are going to rip up most of the floor, have some time for dryout, and then put on a brand-new floor. The next item was the LMS gym floor. That will start in early July. That is a three-week process. The finishing touch of the LMS gym floor will be a water-based, I think it's water-based, much like Liman's. And then we will also have a Panther decal put in the center with LMS writing somewhere on the floor, and it's going to look amazing. Then, next on the agenda was the LES playscape, which was donated by a school in Mansfield. It is a pre-K playscape. It will be delivered mid-July, and it will be fenced, which is grant-funded. That is part of the summer work. And amongst that is refinishing some floors in the schools and moving some staff around to accommodate some of the moving parts that have to happen in the summertime. Next on the agenda was Liman Lighting. Phases one and three are already done. Phase two was, which was originally talked about being started in the fall, will now happen in the summer, so that hopefully the goal is by the start of the school year, the entire lighting process in the auditorium at Liman will be complete. And then finally, the big one is the LMS asbestos project that will be begun around June 24th. The abatement will be finished around the week of June 29th. Then their, their goal is to finish the flooring the week of August 12th. Originally, we talked about maybe getting some storage containers for the furniture, but no, we do not need them at this time, as John and his staff has found places for all of the furniture to go as he's going to do it, and the project is taking five steps, five sections at a time, finishing one and going to another one. So a lot of great things, exciting, in the facilities world. It's going to be amazing at the start of next school year.
Awesome. Basic. Any questions? No? Okay. Brian, policy?
Nothing this month. Our last meeting was just before the last supportive meeting.
Awesome. One quick thing, I did hear Rachel say there was, you know, that, that policy.
Yes.
Also, within the curriculum, so I'm going to now help me. We're hoping that you could, you could send that policy in your direction as well.
Clarification of a couple things that are not clear once you give the policy.
Do you remember the type, the name of the policy?
6019. Course material, yeah. Adoption of learning materials.
Thank you. You're going to have to collaborate with those other two subcommittees, if you don't mind, Brian.
6012.
Thank you. Going to work.
Got it.
All right, thank you. I do just want to say for governance, we did meet, you know, we did, we did talk about the, the book that was The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night. The way that it is posted on the agenda is incorrect. So we will be, I'll be asking someone to make a motion to amend that because it cannot live with the Act on Adoption of New Course Textbooks because it's a different circumstance. So we're going to have to remove that the way that it's written, okay? So we're going to have to amend that the way that it's written, okay? And amend that. All right. Does anybody have any questions? All right, we'll move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. I know I have shared this before, but I'm really pleased with the decision of the town to move forward. The school study, I've really enjoyed the collaboration with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. It's been a learning experience, a lot of data coming our way. I'd say we're about three-fourths of the way done with this study. At the most recent meeting, they did a summary of utilization and capacity within our buildings, and they presented some consolidation opportunities. So I know that for our board, hearing consolidation opportunities may be concerning is part of the process. They've also talked about growing enrollment and expansion opportunities. And as part of this consolidation exploration, they talked about additions being put on different buildings, et cetera. So there's a lot of information coming our way. It will be exciting to look at the final report and see where those conversations go in that subcommittee and ultimately what the town feels about that report and decisions that will come from it. The next steps, there'll be a meeting on June 18th at 4:30, and that will continue to discuss the consolidation options and verify options to develop moving forward. Any questions about the school study update? All right, moving on to Strategic Plan. So I want to publicly thank all the stakeholders that played a part in the Strategic Planning Subcommittee meetings that we had. We had our last one not too long ago. Diane Dugess from Eastcon helped co-facilitate that process. We did come up with three large overarching goals that fit within our vision statements. And from that, we have theories of action that go under each of those three overarching goals. And we've started to put together some possible actions and strategies, but a lot of that heavy lifting will be done with the administrative team. As we were talking about celebrating our data and thinking about next steps, we're going to be aligning those next steps with these theories of action. And that will be done within the next few weeks. The final product of this plan, my goal is to have it ready to be sent to families before the start of next school year. That's an ambitious goal. There's still a lot of work to be done. What I will be working on over the summer is putting together some type of introduction to this plan, connecting it to our current vision and mission, giving some more context of the plan and refining those action steps by adding the persons that are responsible and associated timelines for each of them. Any questions about the Strategic Plan or comments?
Just a question. So you'll have it ready by the beginning of next school year. Will you present it to the Board in the August meeting, or just?
That would be a hope. So as part of our Leadership Retreat, I hope to go a little bit more into detail than this quick overview so that you can have an idea of where we stand at that point. And then I would hope to be able to make a further presentation in August. If I do not feel comfortable launching this out to the community because I haven't had an opportunity to share with you, that communication to the community would probably be delayed into September. And I would then, you know, do a presentation to the Board then.
Okay, thanks.
Andy, can I interrupt because during Governance, I forgot to also just remind the Board about July 10th. You just mentioned the retreat. I'm hopeful that everybody marks that in their calendar first. I believe you said three o'clock we'd like to start?
What is that again?
The Board Retreat. It's an opportunity for us to come together as a Board. We do, in the past, we've talked about some of our goals for the Board. We've also had some PD for us, some Professional Development for us, from, you know, some advisors on our roles and responsibilities. But it's a good opportunity for us to kind of hit the refresh button sometime and come together.
Should I say 4:30?
I think it was three, three o'clock.
Three. No, it's July 10th.
It's not actually a retreat, like.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
It sounds fancy.
It's a meeting.
At the middle school.
Middle School Library.
I'll have it in my Friday update again. I'll have it, everyone, until July 10th.
We're going camping. No, we're going camping. It's our retreat.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. The next one, I'll give you an update on the fiber line, which has to do with the technology upgrades and performance, most specifically at the elementary school, but it will have an impact across the district. Jacques making his way to the table, but he and I were able to collaborate and conversate earlier today. So I will present. Jacques, if I miss anything, please jump in. So currently, we have what is called a multi-mode fiber run that's owned by Frontier, and we're limited to 100 megabits because of the distance. With this new fiber line, which is a single-mode fiber run, will have 1,000 megabits. So I tried to think about this because Jacques was doing a great job of explaining it in TechSpeak, and I'm thinking, "All right, what does that mean to me?" So essentially, we will be getting 10 times better performance at the elementary school, which is long overdue. That better performance at LES will utilize the 1-gig connection with the Connecticut Education Network for Internet access. It will also allow for quicker connections to the servers, which are actually located at the middle school, enabling teachers to more readily download files, access individual and shared network drives, and operate on the Internet. So it's going to be something that will take our technology use in the classroom to the next level, make for more efficient and effective use of technology. And if you think about the clientele at the elementary school, we have our youngest learners. They don't want to be staring at screens that are lagging or taking time downloading, so this is going to be very important. Obviously, it also connects to the work that Rita, Jess, and the elementary school team have led around the development and adoption of a new reading program that integrates a lot of technology into that program. Anything on performance, Jacques?
I just want to add, we don't know why the line was a multi-mode line. They should have never done that, but it was done so long ago that the multi-mode was more readily available than the single mode. But we're talking like Al-Vertifave time. That's what I'm, that's what I'm being told. Like, I can't find any information. So most of the people are saying, they don't even believe we're going 2.1 miles with a multi-mode. Like, the people I, and these are professionals that do this on, you know, a day-to-day basis. So it's been something that's given me a little lack of sleep since I started here because it's my only connection to the elementary school.
So moving into the timeline, which will hopefully have Jacques sleeping better. Crown Castle, who's a subcontractor of CEN, will be installing the fiber run. They're in the process of actually setting up a site visit. Our early estimates on the timeline for the completion date are Fall 2024. But the vendor is optimistic that if we do not encounter issues, they will be done by the end of August, which is obviously something we're very eager to see happen because that's when our teachers and kids will be coming back. Unfortunately, that work is out of our control, and what problems they may encounter is out of our control. You know, I'm trying to allow myself to stay positive that we're even getting this work done finally after so many years, but really looking forward to having it done by the time the teachers and kids come back. As far as cost goes, currently, we pay Frontier $567 per month for the multi-mode fiber run with the limited 100-megabit service. Transitioning to CBN on a five-year lease with payments of $915 per month. In subsequent years, though, we expect that the cost will be defrayed through the use of E-rate funding. And with the E-rate funding, there's a potential we can save 60% of that $915. So a lot of numbers being thrown at you here. But if we get that 60%, the operating cost impact would be $400 a month, which is less than what we're currently paying for 10x better performance speed. And with the work Jacques has done with Frontier to cut obsolete phone lines, we might break even on this cost. So we'll get 10x better performance speed at $0.
Nice. That was great.
The only thing we didn't add, we did get a quote from Certex to buy that line from them, and it was, what, $82,000?
Yeah, it was in the 80s.
So the leasing was, because of the fact that if we buy it, we can't use E-rate. If we lease, we can use E-rate. It's a much better deal.
Yeah, the upfront cost is something we were not prepared to deal with, and the E-rate funding option was very attractive. Thanks, Jacques.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacques.
All right, the last thing I have here is the Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. As I had shared in previous meetings, submitted to the state, was awaiting feedback, and I was glad to know that all districts received some type of feedback. So the state has taken this particular initiative very seriously. In the letter that I received on June 4th, it indicated that the review of our plan was done. And after careful deliberation, is the wording they used, our plan was conditionally approved. So along with that conditional improvement, they gave us a tool, a feedback tool, to show where we need to make improvements. So specifically, they indicate that our hiring and selection goal focuses solely on training, and it should be expanded into selection outcomes based on data. So that's something that I have to look to include. There was also indication that our communication plan appears to be too internal, rather than being both internal and external. So they want us to broaden how we plan to communicate this. So I've tried myself to interpret what that means, but they are having some open office hours between June 7th and June 26th. Hopefully, I can take advantage of that. Just an interesting piece of data for you to consider. There was a survey that went out from CAPS almost immediately after districts started receiving this feedback. Seventy-five superintendents responded. Of the 75 who responded, 54 of those districts were conditionally approved. So everybody's got some work to do based on the information that the state is providing to them. So we're not alone in this. So if I'm unable to make those office hours, I feel like I have some colleagues that I can lean into and see what they're doing. I feel confident. This improvement effort doesn't need to be done until October 1st. Any questions about that?
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
My answer for.
All right, Martha has put together the packet of information as she does every month. You know, we always focus, at this point in the year, where we are in terms of percent remaining. At this point, we're at 13% of our total operating budget. That is slightly above where we've been on our five-year historical average, which is right around 10%, as I indicated in the Finance Subcommittee meeting earlier. Though I've learned that a lot can happen in a short amount of time, so we're closely monitoring the budget. But we are still feeling that we will end in a favorable way and have a small surplus to be able to move into the non-lapsing. But that number, we don't have an exact figure at this point, and it is getting smaller by the day. Any questions about the 2324 operating budget?
How about non-lapsing?
The non-lapsing projected balance right now is $159,615.77. That takes into account the money set aside for a couple of projects that are not quite complete yet, but are nearing completion. We are receiving the final invoices now.
Any questions on non-lapsing? No? All right, thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Martha?
Motion to amend Action Item 4 to remove Item 11 in the list of books to approve.
Okay, motion by Alexis, seconded by Brian. Any discussion on the removal of Item 11? Action Item 4.
Can I add one more thing about that, honey? I've been pretty.
Discussion? Sure.
About how I felt about that particular book.
Right now, Sherri, just so you know, we're taking it off the agenda right now.
I understand that.
Okay.
This is in support of maybe why we're taking it off in addition to what I've said before.
Okay.
I found out the Disability Studies Quarterly in April, on April 4th, 2015, made a statement about that particular book. And they said, Studies Quarterly, Disability Studies Quarterly, quote, "Curious incident portrays the autistic protagonist as unsympathetic, elitist, violent, and lacking in empathy. It portrays abuse, abandonment, and gaslighting as a normal or even justified response." So my point is that the Disability Studies Quarterly has published something about that book, and they obviously disapprove. In addition to that, there is a part in that book where Christopher, the boy, is on a bus and he wets his pants because he didn't know that there was a bathroom on the bus. And when I read that, I thought, I don't want people to think that autistic people don't even know, you know, about bathrooms and common sense. So, you know, as you all know, I feel very strongly about that book. And I just wanted to add something that wasn't a personal opinion, but it was from the Disability Studies Quarterly. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of amending the agenda to remove Action Item Number 4, Number 11? Please raise your hand. If that passes unanimously.
So, based on much discussion, motion to amend the previously adopted at the Board of Education's April 16th regular meeting to approve the books that were all listed, with the exception of The Curious Incident. I could read them all if you'd like, but we have the minutes that we approved all but five as the primary source of materials for coursework to add Item 5, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Play by Simon Stephens. So that's the motion.
That's his main motion.
To amend the agenda to add Action Item 8 of what I just read.
Oh, so it's five, so that's why I was confused.
Yeah, so the motion is to amend what we did back on April 16th to add Item 5 back into, to amend the agenda. So basically, rescinding but adding.
Second.
Motion by Alexis, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? Go ahead, Dana.
I don't know what's going on. I don't know what that means. How can you, how can you change Agenda from April to add something back into something that was voted on that doesn't include that? I don't understand what's happening.
She's not, she's actually making a motion to amend a motion, not an agenda.
Yeah, no, the motion is to add the agenda onto the current, I mean, Action Item to amend that. And the reason it was given is to amend something previously adopted can be made by any member. It must be seconded and subject to debate. If it does not pass that motion, the motion that passed on April 16th stands. So in order to leave what happened, but just add this one piece back in, this is the process we were told we need to take.
Are you saying put the incident book back in?
It's the, it's an action item.
To add it back to the agenda?
It's not the motion to approve it at this point. We're just, we're asking to put it back on. So that has to be voted on because we're changing the agenda. And it has to be Board-approved.
So in other words, we're giving it another chance to be voted and approved? That's what this motion is about?
Based on all the information that we have gone through, yes.
So it'll be up for consideration to be voted back into acceptance?
Under Item 8, yes.
So, yes, discussion now, yeah? I thought I'd say your hand, Brian.
I don't understand why we're doing a second bite at the apple. I, you know, we toil over a lot of things on a monthly basis. And a whole number of things in subcommittees and here at our regular board meetings. And we had a vote. Perhaps some felt that they weren't as prepared as others. I don't know. But I go through a process, others go through some process. Whatever you do, you do. But I think it's in. But I think it's trying to take another bite at the apple because we didn't like the outcome sits really, really forward with me. Thanks.
I'm just gonna say, I'm cutting two people. I know that I'm getting hurt, too. I, my view, and I don't think we're taking a bite at the apple again, is because we didn't have all of the information. When we went to the subcommittee following that meeting, we were then given the way that the texts were going to be used. To me, that was changing, changing my view even of, and if you look back at other books, you know, it kind of changed the way that I felt about how we're utilizing texts. So I do believe, and we did have an extensive discussion about this being a learning process, which is why we're taking the process back to the policy committee. It's not like we're just, we didn't like, we didn't like that we didn't approve a letter of resignation, which obviously never happened, but, you know, and we wanted to go back and vote on it because I didn't get my way or somebody didn't get their way. That's not at all, I don't see it like that for me personally. I see it as more of like a learning process. We're developing, we're rethinking the whole English Language Arts Department. And I think that now that we've done it once, we have not done that before, now that we've done it, we have a system, we have a process, and I do think there were some growing pains within, within that, but I consider it more of like a learning experience and process. I'm sorry. Dawn, you had your hand up, and then Nicole.
Yes. I had, and I'm not asking about this anyway, because after, because in the original conversation about the book, part of the information that was shared was that it's already supplemental and we don't have to vote on supplemental, which I understand is true. But then by going to the curriculum subcommittee meeting last week, I learned why the instructors are asking for certain books to be moved from, or to be considered primary. And I cannot remember the exact, it's in the policy. It's a percentage of the students and the percentage of the time. And so that's, that is different information than what was shared originally, and that also shifted, the fact that I felt like I was learning more about the whole.
Nicole?
I think that it's important that we all hear each other's opinions about this. I mean, we all have various opinions and we all, we all have different perspectives. And to, to have this discussion now and just beat this over and over again, we need to move on to actually talking about this book, because I feel the same way. In April, I'm going to totally trust the chair of curriculum when she says that she doesn't like this book. But that was my fault. I did not go deeper into that. I did not ask her what exactly, what was wrong with this book. Then I found out what was wrong with it. Then I heard from the English department what, what their opinion was. I didn't have enough information to make that decision in April, and that's where I fault myself. Yeah. So now, I would like to look, take another look at this book again and have discussions around the table and hear everyone's opinion and talk about the new information we learned. That's it.
If I could just respond?
Yeah, just as long as nobody who has not spoken yet would like to speak. Go ahead, Brian.
And I appreciate your opinion, Sarah and Dawn, you know, that you, that you gleaned some additional information. I really do. What sticks with me, though, that I don't think probably changed is the, the commentary, the whatever, how the English department spoke down, I felt, to the board with what they decided to put in their products or the submissions that they brought before the board in April. And, you know, I, I too think that there are a lot of choices out there, and I, I tend to think that I'm not approved, but I, I also don't like, or don't appreciate being dictated to and told that, you know, my opinion doesn't matter because I don't have a, you know, master's degree in education or above. I think that's insulting. And I think that there are other choices. The whole list of books that we have again tonight have a whole other list of dark subject matter, from profanity to sexuality to whatever in them. I gotta think that, you know, that at some point in time, the buck does stop with us, and we do have, have choices. So to Nicole's point, that's all I've got. Thanks. How about?
Sherry, you can get your hand up.
I'm just wondering, if we vote on something, and it's in the minutes and it's been published, are we setting a precedent of going back, oh, well, you know, remember back in July or in August? Let's have another vote on that. Let's have some discussion, another vote. Are we setting a precedent, or is this the way business has gone as usual?
We've not done this as far as I've been here, but it is absolutely within our legal rights.
And, and within Robert's roles?
Yes.
Yes.
So anything's up for a revote, basically?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
So I'd like to play off of that idea, and let's reinvestigate the nepotism policy that got defeated that I was opposed to, and let's reinvestigate this entire course change. Because now that I know more information about how the English department is changing everything, and they're not electives, they're required classes, I would not have voted for it. Put that on the record. How can we do that? We can't. We have school starting in two months. We are, we are taking a second bite of the apple, like Brian said, and you can do that with anything. Well, then we might as well spin our wheels. We might as well not voice our opinion because we're just gonna change it next month if we get enough people to decide to change it.
Dinell, are you just talking to yourself?
Well, I do have a statement to read, if you'd like me to, about the book. I also have a paper to pass out. Sorry?
It hasn't even added to the agenda.
Don't we vote on this first? Because other guys...
Right. I don't even know why we need to add it to the agenda, is my point. This is the first page of the play.
Sarah, just my word. If we are adding it, if it ends failing, then this conversation is...
Well, my, my statement, I was asked to give, based on a comment made by a person that spoke at public comment. That was incorrect.
It's not...
Would it change her, would it change her mind about adding it to the agenda?
Yeah, maybe.
I think we should add it to the agenda and then discuss it. That's just my...
I'm not gonna stop her from continuing only because there is a process. So in order for us to put it on the agenda, we need a two-thirds vote to add it to the agenda. So I'm not gonna deny Dinell. Yeah, yeah. However, I do just want to make sure that we are all making decisions within the, this is very difficult, best interest for our students with no discriminatory viewpoints in any direction.
But we can change our minds in the future.
I don't know what you mean by that.
With any type of discrimination as far as race, religion, ethnicity, that type of thing.
I'd like to read my statement. "I was unable to attend last month's full board meeting due to my son's college graduation. I watched the YouTube recording later, along with at least 175 other viewers. I decided to write a statement of clarification in regards to a comment made during public comment about something said in my subcommittee meeting weeks earlier. The person making public comment last month said that it was stated, 'It wasn't actually the profanity that prevented passage of this play, but the religious beliefs that prevented this play from being approved.' They called this disturbing and alarming. Hmm. How do you judge what's appropriate and what is not? For me and others, our faith guides us. For some, it may be a moral code they've defined for themselves, your family, upbringing, values, or perhaps you let others decide what's right and wrong and you just follow along with your culture. I think we all have some kind of standard, a plumb line, if you will, that helps us decide what is appropriate. My standard of appropriateness comes from my core values shaped by my faith. I did not vote against the play due to any religious content in it. There is profanity in it, just like many of the other books proposed, but blasphemy is where I personally draw the line with profanity and a classroom-use text. It's very offensive language. The mission statement of our curriculum says that it prepares students to be contributing members of a diverse global society. Our portrait of a graduate says that a responsible citizen collaborates with diverse people. A student who demonstrates the qualities of a responsible citizen respects diverse people, cultures, and viewpoints in a diverse global society. How is disrespecting someone else's beliefs by disregarding offensive language doing that? As members of the Board of Education, we are asked to decide if these texts are appropriate for classroom use and further, to be endorsed as primary sources required for our children to read in these newly proposed curriculums. I ask you, who, what defines appropriate texts for you, and where do you draw the line? It's beyond disturbing and alarming that some Lyman teachers think that texts with this offensive language are what is in the best interest of my kid, your kid, and our students, and reflects our mission statement and portrait of a graduate." Thank you.
Any further discussions? All those in favor of adding the action item number eight, please raise your hand. That is Dawn, Rachel, Alexis, Sarah, Nicole. All those opposed? Sherry, Brian, Dinell, and Andrew. That motion failed. So we will not be adding to the agenda. Okay. Action item number one, act on letters of resignation.
Motion to accept the letters of resignation with regret.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Brian. All those in favor, please raise your, oh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Action number two, act on the letter of retirement.
Motion to act on the letter of retirement with regret.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Sherry. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Action number three, act on the second reading update to the policy use of school facilities.
Motion to accept the second reading update.
Second. What?
Wait. Motion to accept the second reading update, policy number 1007?
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Andrew. Any discussion? All the, yes, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Action item number four, act on the adoption of the new course textbooks, items one through 10.
Motion to accept the textbooks, numbers one through 10.
I'm second. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Alexis. Any discussion?
I would like to go through them one by one, as a motion, rather than all 10 at once, in case people disagree about specific titles.
Okay. Would you like to kick back your motion, Nicole?
Okay.
You send your motion.
I rescind my motion.
Dinell, you have a motion?
I move that we accept Uncovering World Mythology: The Ultimate Collection by Lucas Russo.
Second.
Motion by Dinell, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
And motion that we approve Kill Shakespeare by Connor McCreary and Anthony Del Cole, Andy Ballinger.
Second.
Motion by Dinell, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is Sherry, Nicole.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm trying to like also look at the accuracy on that.
I was on the wrong page.
That passes unanimously. Raise your hand.
Motion to accept Spill Zone.
Why don't we just do the rest of them?
No, she wants to do the most. Could you make the motion, Nicole?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion by Nicole.
Second.
Seconded by Alexis. Any discussion?
What's wrong with this one?
There's lots of profanity and pictorials that can be objectionable.
When you say profanity, you mean the F-word?
I'm not sure. It was my overall feeling that I did not want to vote for this book as a very good text for my curriculum, that my child may take, that's all.
But what is the profanity?
You can look in the review packet. That's what I did. I didn't read the whole book. I did spend quite a bit of time on this project. It's overwhelming to go through an entirely, four new courses and all of these texts. It's not like adopting a textbook and a prepackaged piece of curriculum for a school. It's a tremendous amount of work. It's a learning curve. I know that.
All right. This is the problem I'm having right now. We are living in a society where we have to put a pronoun in front of our name, where we have to accept all kinds of things that I didn't grow up in. I did not grow up in this age that we have right now, where people are very sensitive and people are, are very, everything's racist around here, right? I'm white, so therefore I'm racist. I have to accept the diverse world that I live in, even though there are some things I don't agree with in this world, okay? But because I live in 2024 and I'm a teacher in 2024, I have to accept these things, whether I agree with them or not, or else I am going to be deemed insensitive, uncultural, or racist. It is the same thing with books. You cannot take these books away from these kids and say, you're not allowed to read this. Because the reality of the situation is, they're gonna go on social media and they're gonna look this all up on social media anyway. So by us saying, we're not approving these books, we're basically telling our English department at Lyman that we don't trust their judgment. And I find offensive that, because I am a teacher. And when I say, I want to read this book and I have a way of teaching it that will make my children understand the topic that I want to teach and, and make them talk about really sensitive issues that no one wants to talk about. I wrote a book for real, and there is the F-word all over that book, and my sixth graders are buying that book. Do I think that that's appropriate for sixth graders? Absolutely not. But their parents think that they should read that book. And guess what? They're reading it. So who am I to say, you're not allowed to read this very sensitive nature? I don't have that right. Not in 2024, I don't. Maybe in 1973 I did, but now I don't, because then I would be deemed racist. So the problem I'm having right now is, we are now being a racist board, and I don't like that. So unless you can give me some concrete examples of why this is bad for kids to read these things, where they're already going to read it anyway, whether we approve it or not, then I'm going to approve all these books because I trust my English department at Lyman Memorial High School.
Thank you.
I just would like to add.
I think it was a motion. Was there a second?
Yes.
Yes, Alexis.
A motion and a second, we were in discussion of Spill Zone. I'd like to keep, I, I would like to continue this conversation, but I'd like to keep on to the topic of this specific book, please. I feel passionately as well. I'm going to try to remain the board chair and make sure that our topics are remaining attached to the specific book, because that is the motion. Is there any discussion on Spill Zone? Was there an answer to the question about, that Nicole had specifically, about what exactly is in the book that we are choosing for the English department not to teach? exactly is in the book that we are choosing for the English department not to teach or not to have as a primary source for students?
Yeah, I just want to say that for me, it's about me endorsing it and putting my name to it, saying that I think this is the best text for this class. I can't do that. That's a personal decision.
Yeah.
You guys can make that decision for yourself, but I personally am not going to go on the record and say, "Hey, Mr. Smith, I approved that book. It's a good one." I'm not going to do that for this book.
And Danelle said personal. She said a personal decision, not a subcommittee recommendation.
Yeah, our subcommittee did not really get together just due to circumstances. We were never able to get together in the amount of time that we needed to talk about these in detail and to make a recommendation. We, as a committee, do not have a recommendation for any of these books because of the various circumstances and timeline that we had. So this book, Spill Zone, I personally am not voting for, that's all.
Spill Zone related?
Yeah. Can I try more generically, I think, to answer Nicole's question? I, um, I think this, in this particular example, uh, it's up to the individual what they decide is, is not appropriate or appropriate. And, um, the... So, you know, to any one of us, we could each, and we likely, based on the way it looks, we all do have very different opinions on some of these books. But I think it's, I think it's, I think it is a personal opinion, and it's a personal choice on what is, you know, what you find offensive or what's not.
Any further discussion?
I'll just say, uh, my opinion on the book, um, is separate from, from what I've heard. It is simply that, to me, it feels like, sorry, a little bit of a challenge with, with the, the graphic novels. And some of them, I think, are, are of a higher caliber than others. This one in particular, I think, is fairly cheap. To me, it reminds me of a video game. It's a dystopian, um, uh, theme. Um, I felt there were some, uh, you know, I guess, um, progressive portrayal of women in it. There are things that I wouldn't want to endorse, uh, to be carried into the classroom, to be taught.
Um, as a retired English teacher, but I've retained my certification, um, I would agree with Brian and Danelle. As an English teacher, if it were up to me, I would not choose that book to, to use in the classroom.
Okay. All those in favor of approving Spill Zone, please raise your hand. That is Dawn, Rachel, Alexis, Sarah, and Nicole. All those opposed? Sherry, Brian, Danelle, Andrew. That motion passes. Okay. Um, item number five.
Motion to approve Watchmen.
I'm sorry, four. I'm sorry. I said the wrong thing, but you're right, Nicole.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Alexis. All those in favor of approving Watchmen, please raise your hand. That is Dawn, Rachel, Alexis, Sarah, and Nicole, and Sherry. All those opposed? Andrew, Brian, and Danelle. Motion passes. Item number five, Adal's House, Part Two.
I move that we accept Adal's House, Part Two, by Lucas Neff.
Second.
Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
I do want to say something about this play. Um, I found this play very entertaining as an adult. It's about a married couple, and they're fighting the whole play. I don't personally think it's going to be interesting to kids, but I do think it's a play that you and I might go to watch together in a theater and enjoy it fully. But I'm not gonna, um, deny it from being in a curriculum. I don't, there's... The comments on it are, are accurate, um, that the teacher put forward here. I agree with her fully, and, um, I move that we accept it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Item number six, Into the Wild.
I move that we accept Into the Wild by John Krakauer.
Second.
Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is Brian, Nicole, Danelle, Sarah, Alexis, Andrew, Rachel, and Dawn. All those opposed? That is Sherry. Motion passes.
I move that we accept Arsenic Oil Lace by Joseph Kessler-Lang Keselring.
Second.
Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
I, I saw the play at Jorgensen as a, a middle schooler, and I enjoyed it. It's a classic. I recommend it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously.
I move that we accept Almost Maine by John Kariani.
Second.
Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
I enjoyed that.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. That passes unanimously.
This one's a little easier. I, I move that we accept Magnetic Reading Foundations, published by Curriculum Associates, LLC.
Second.
For elementary school.
Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
And I move that we accept, my view, Literacy, published by Savis Learning Company.
Second. Motion by Danelle, seconded by Nicole.
No, Sherry.
Sherry. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Act on the Athletic Training Services Contract. Um, before, I mean, we could make a motion or we could have a little bit of background. Maybe did you want to tell anybody in on, I know you had a, um, a bid was in the board packet, in case you missed it. It's kind of hard, I mean, it's kind of easy to guess. Okay, this page forty, seventy-four.
Sure. So this is the second time that this has gone out to RFP. Uh, both times that it's gone out, we have received one bid. That one bidder is our current athletic trainer, who has been a longstanding athletic trainer in the district. She did accompany her bid with a letter that has been left at your place setting, um, and the second bid did come back significantly lower than the first for your review.
I'll accept the motion. More discussion, I mean, let's have a motion and then any discussion.
It's $10,000 less?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the one-year electric.
Second.
Motion by Rachel, seconded by Nicole. Discussion? Brian?
Well, I appreciate her coming down in price that we went from 100% increase to about a 70% increase. And I, I would have found probably more favorable with it if there would have been not trying to take whatever they felt they were lacking in previous years all in year one. We've done a, uh, a good job as far as, um, in my opinion, really trying to be thoughtful about, you know, raises and, and equity as far as bringing folks up to what they're worth. But, um, trying to take it all out in year one based on a, a budget that we've made some difficult decisions with, um, is not something I'm in favor with. Oh, thanks.
We currently pay her 24?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So this is $13,000 more.
And we have this budgeted, this $40,000 is part of our budget?
Yeah, so, uh, this number would be supported by our budget. Um, we did not have the bids prior to the budget, so we had to be, uh, overly cautious in what the bids might come in at. So this particular bid would fit within our approved budget, but as Brian alluded to, we did make some significant cuts in other places. So those could potentially, um, be supported with any funds that were left over. Uh, just as, uh, something else for you to consider, I did do, um, some research on my own as to what is being provided in other districts. Uh, this is a shortage area. Uh, many districts are losing their athletic training services to other districts that are deciding to pay higher. Um, some districts don't have an athletic trainer. This number is relatively in line with what many other districts are paying, but to Brian's point, it's a significant increase from last year to this.
And districts of our size, this is what they're paying?
Yes, many of them.
Sherry?
Would this be a one-year contract?
It's listed in our packet as a three-year contract. That is...
Seventy-four.
Thank you.
Yep.
That is also...
So, just so I understand, we could bid just for year one? Or we could approve just year one now, or we have to approve all three years?
Well, the contractor has, um, asked for three years. They're giving us a bid for three years. Did we post it as a three-year contract, Andy, or a one-year contract? Do you know?
I don't know if we specifically outlined the terms of the contract. I don't have that answer at the top of my mind.
So this is a $13,000 salary increase. I understand that this is the only bid that we have, but I don't know any teachers that have gotten a $13,000 salary range. And if we compare our teachers with the price that other districts are paying teachers, we're far below what some of them are, are as well.
Yeah, and I think what makes this a little bit more complicated is, um, the fact we only have one bid, the fact that this person is the same person that we have hired right now. We do not do open negotiations with anybody. Um, you know, I mean, even, even the negotiations with the superintendent is an executive session that's discussing one person. So I do feel a little uncomfortable going super in-depth, um, with this conversation in, in the open session. I'm not sure if anybody has any thoughts on how we could kind of proceed last, you passed one, we sent a back bid, we didn't get anybody. What are your thoughts, Rachel?
Can we table this to executive session later in the meeting?
Well, let's talk about that, because there are only certain reasons why we can ever go into executive session. One is specific personnel. Um, discussing personnel and whether it's negotiations. Um, it's hard, because this really isn't a negotiation.
We weren't, yeah, this isn't a negotiation. This is a bid proposal. So we either accept or not.
There was a discussion at the last meeting about the additional hours. Do you remember what the additional hours are?
Yeah, just for clarification, so the RFP that was requested, and you know that went out the second time, went back to the 750 hours. So the first one was 800 hours. We changed that in the second round. So this is reflective of 750 hours.
Wait, so it's 50 hours less now?
Mm-hmm. And $10,000 less.
It's 50 hours less than the first request for proposals, but it's similar to the service that is currently being provided.
Right, correct. Now we have 750 hours.
Correct.
At $27,000.
I'm in favor of the contract. I think that, um, the enthusiasm that, um, the kids express with sports, even if they're not playing sports, it's kind of brands, their school, and, uh, I, I think we should really do all that we can for sports. And I think that this would be a step in the right direction.
I'm just curious, if we say no, the repercussions?
So we would run the risk of our current athletic trainer looking elsewhere. You know, I think that we have to be mindful that this individual is going to need to secure a position for their livelihood, for their family. So there's no guarantee that if we keep delaying this decision that this person, uh, would stay on board. And then we could potentially go into athletic contests without athletic training services. We could pursue potentially having, like, onsite EMS support. That's going to be very costly in its own right, or going into athletic contests without that level of, uh, expertise and support on, on the health side of things for our athletes.
Do you think, um, and just because I don't know, um, is she used at, you know, obviously she's there at every high school level athletic event? And we use her services at each event?
I've been to a lot of sporting events at Lyman, and she is utilized almost every event. So I shudder to think what it would be like if she wasn't there, with the injuries that these high school kids have.
And then if we say no to this, we would still try to retain her at the current, what she's currently, hours and pay? If she's willing?
Yeah, I'd be looking for direction from the board at that point. You know, we've gone out to bid. We followed that appropriate process. We've got the bid two different times. If this is another time that we're not going to vote on this bid, I'd be looking for direction as to how do you want me to try to secure this particular individual to continue the relationship, uh, with Lebanon Public Schools?
And I've had a conversation with Andy, talked about, um, you know, what the plan would be, you know? If it didn't work out, you know, and that would be kind of like a, you'd have to kind of follow with administration and with athletic director, you know, to ensure that they were communicating, to make sure that we have the, um, the people that need to be there. Obviously, I'm uncomfortable with a $13,000 increase. I'm going to be vocal and open about that. I was uncomfortable with the increase last time, too. I would be more comfortable with a one-year contract only, um, but I would hope that we could get those extra 50 hours for $13,000, considering nobody in the district would go to $13,000 increase. I don't care for it myself, but I would be willing, because I do feel backed into a corner. Sherry?
Is there someone that would evaluate, um, that position and how well it was performed? If we did give a one-year contract and the evaluation was, was very positive, we would have a chance to renew it again?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I would think so, right?
Since it is a, a new position, logically speaking.
Well, we, this is the same person that we've had providing these services with the same type of contract.
But a little bit bigger responsibilities, right? Aren't there more hours?
No. Same.
Oh, it's the same?
It's the same.
Yes.
It's basically $53 an hour, what this contract, the one-year contract is. Or year one of her contract.
She is an excellent trainer.
I, I mean, I feel backed into a corner on, as you say, um, that's what sort of bothers me about it, which we don't have a, an alternative. I'm also curious about, I guess, if we, if we punted on it and we had no, no one, what happens to the budget? If we lose it next year, you know, will we not have that allotted? And, um, how difficult would it be to get that back? I, I don't like making that decision based on one submission.
Exactly.
But, you know.
Exactly. This is the top one.
Well, we either send it back with what you're proposing, you know, with the hours back and with a one-year, or we vote on this one and, I guess, see where it goes. But it's, you know, we, we did not, for as hard as folks in this board fought for teacher salaries and paras salaries and everything else, that's an, that's an extremely high increase in rate of pay.
It's frustrating.
It is.
I'm sorry. When, when, so she says 750 hours. I mean, basically, that's an estimate of the services, right? Because it's all based... the services, right? Because it's all based on home games. And does she go to away games? So it's all based on home games, which we don't know what that's exactly going to be, correct? So it's just an estimate. So she could go over, or is she going to like stop at 750?
She also provides services on days that there's no games. She's here for practices.
For practices.
Yeah. She supports, you know, any injury prevention. She supports, you know, rehabilitation after injuries. So it's not just onsite at games.
I see.
She's doing other preventative things and teaching into those things, too.
Okay.
Sarah, can I say something?
Yep.
I don't think there's any question about the quality of service that we get from her. I should say the trainer instead of identifying the person. But I don't think there's any question of that. I think the problem we're having is the amount of increase for the same amount of hours when there's other staff that haven't gotten the increase, that asked for an increase, or other areas where we had to cut the budget, to make this allowance in the budget, which is more than we need for this position now. So we've got this like bubble at the top that we overbudgeted, and we're moving it down slowly, saying we're not comfortable with all of that money. But we're still willing to give maybe $13,000 more to this person, simply because that's the line item in the budget, when, again, other areas of the budget have been cut to try to get it down to the bare minimums, was the quote that we've been saying.
I mean, I just think, it's just that it's the only bid that we have, right? I think that's the problem.
Well, let's vote on it.
Okay. Somebody had the motion to approve the bid. Did you want to amend that motion? Or did you want to keep it?
Keep it.
I want to amend it.
Oh.
To a one-year only.
Are we allowed to do that?
That's, if that's not what the RFP was, then we've got to either table it again and send it back, I think.
But we don't know.
As a point of order, or-
That sounds right to me. I don't think we-
Well, and I don't want to, the thing is, I don't want to take a chance on it. I mean, we don't, it was, whatever we requested, we have to stick by. And that's what they bid on, so.
I don't know. Can we look it up? Is it listed?
As is.
I think we have to vote on it.
Yeah, you either got to vote on it as is or table it. So I don't think you can amend it.
Rachel made a motion. Nicole seconded. Any further discussion?
The motion was to approve the Athletic Trainer Services Contract with a three-year term.
Thank you. If you could just approve it for the 24, 25 year.
Can we?
You know, thanks, Ellen.
I'd just be real, without positive assurance, I don't want to, that's like us going back on our word for the request for proposals. So I, like I said, I'd feel either more comfortable voting all on it or just tabling it. That's really taking those two choices.
All those in favor of approving the contract as, I mean, the bid as written to Lean Athletic Training Services LLC, please raise your hand. All those opposed. And all those abstaining. Sorry, did you get that?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, that motion goes. So we'll send that back, potentially. I think you have a good direction now. Maybe, maybe you can talk about a one-year if possible.
No, it's already been voted down.
Is that okay? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Action number six, Act on the reinstatement of non-tenured teachers.
Oh, motion to reinstate the non-tenured teachers.
Their names, Cheryl Sharvalo.
Cheryl Sharvalo.
Roberta Ortiz.
Roberta Ortiz.
Margaret Quinn.
Margaret Quinn.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Dinell. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Action number seven, Act on Leader and Educator Evaluation and Support Plans of the Curriculum Subcommittee. Got a close look at this evening. And it gave us a great summary. Any motion on the floor?
Motion to act on Leader and Educator Evaluation Support Plans. Second.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Dinell. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda will require a motion.
Motion to move into an executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.